I'd like to call to order a work session for November 9th, 2020. And we are all present. We have one item on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intimately to answer any questions. And that item is a presentation on the 2020 Employee Satisfaction Survey Results. Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett presenting. Lyman?
Good evening again. We're very pleased to bring forward our 2020 employee survey results. I'll take time just to walk through them and certainly provide question or answers, hopefully, to any questions that you may have. We have again this year, just a little bit of our background regarding the survey. We use National Research Center. They're an independent research firm. They're the firm that also does our employee citizen, or our citizen survey, excuse me. And they are partnered with ICMA. The employee survey measures 10 dimensions of the employee experience, and it is a web-based survey. Objectives of the survey include assessing organizational strengths, identifying organizational challenges, articulating specific needs of our employees. The methodology is a web-based survey. This year, for the 2020 survey, we had 516 employees complete the survey for a response rate of 86%. Historically, and I should add, we, when Julie arrived, one of the things that she really wanted to focus on was increasing our response rate. Last year, we had, or last survey cycle, we were just greater than 80%. So we were a little bit higher. But with the pandemic, we're pleased with the 86% response rate. Our goal is 100%. So we do a lot of things internally to try and generate the highest response rate possible, given some of the challenges with the pandemic. We think an 86% is a nice effort, certainly not the 100% that we're always striving for. The other things related to the goals of the survey, obviously, we'll want to look at increasing job satisfaction. We want to increase employee engagement, obviously productivity and performance. And we also look at quality services, the services of our internal, the quality of our internal services to look to see how we are doing there. Here's the 10 areas of the survey. These are buckets that each of the surveys look at and categorize the information into. Job satisfaction, work group performance, employee contribution and fit, employee supervisor relationship, employee performance evaluation, employee development, wages and benefits, communication decision-making, respect and ethics, and physical work environment. One of the key features of the survey was the ability to benchmark ourselves against other cities. So their database, National Research Center, has a database of 50 communities throughout the United States. 25,000 employees are within their database. So it gives us a great look at how we compare it to other cities. For our 2020 survey, of the 133 questions in the survey, we were higher than the benchmark on 122, and we were similar to the benchmark on 11 of those. And these are statistical in nature in terms of higher or lower. So in order to be higher, they'd need to be 5% or more higher than the average. To be similar, they would need to be within that 5% range. And to be lower, we'd need to be 5% or more lower. Comparing our 2020 ratings to 2018, we had 13 areas that were higher than 2018, 119 that were similar, and one that was lower. And again, this is statistical. If you look at the actual ratings, we only had three areas that were lower than our 2018 ratings. So generally, as we look at the survey, we feel like we had a great performance, given the pandemic and other things that were going on. Looking at it from this perspective, and this is a little hard to read here. What it shows is, this is those 10 survey areas that I showed earlier. Those that are in dark shaded, those are areas of the survey, categories that are higher than our benchmark. That medium shade there, the employee contribution and fit, is similar. And we didn't have any areas that were lower than the benchmark. There were two areas there that have a star by employee, employee contribution and fit, and respect and ethics. And those are areas that are, that drive satisfaction here at the city of Goodyear. So those are specific to us here at Goodyear. These are the things that most drive satisfaction based on their statistical analysis. So the National Research Center walked away with three key findings. Finding number one, job satisfaction and morale continues to soar. These are National Research Center's words. So we've been with them now for four cycles, from 2014 till now, 2014, 2016, 2018, and now our 2020. Been looking at trends over time. So their key finding number one was that job satisfaction remains high. And morale, which we'll talk about in bet as we look at the scores, is also soaring. Great words. We're not quite satisfied yet. It was an area that council looked at last time at our ratings. We were able to move that rating, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. Overall jobs, job satisfaction. If you look at our overall job satisfaction, and this is the specific question that employees answered, were, are you satisfied with your job? 60% strongly agreed that they were satisfied with their job. Oh, I'm sorry. Got a little ahead of myself there. Thank you, Julie. 60% strongly agreed that they were satisfied with their job. Another 30% somewhat agreed. And then we had about 7% that were in disagreement in terms of job satisfaction. So this is a key indicator that we looked at. From a favorability standpoint, the way it appears on the survey, that would be a 93% satisfaction rating.
Could you just hold?
Certainly.
We have a couple of questions at that point.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm just curious, if you strongly agree with 60%, and you somewhat agree with 33%, that's 93%. How is it possible that you have a turnover rate in some departments that are really high? Because if they're strongly agree and they somewhat agree, turnover rates should be very low with those numbers. That's just what I take from it. Now, I know this is probably an average, so maybe you've got details of departments that may vary from this. But when I see these kind of numbers, I think you've got 3%, 4% turnover rate in the city.
And what I would say-
At least that's my conclusion I draw when I see these kind of numbers.
And, and this is an aggregate number of the entire city. We've shared department results this year, or this past week, we've shared department results. So the departments have had an opportunity to dig into that. You'll see throughout the survey, if you look at a micro level, you'll start to see different things pop in different departments, different opportunities we have. Some departments do better than others in some areas. But you'll see, you'll see some indication of where we may have opportunities. So again, this is the aggregate. The information that I'm sharing today is a high level, looking at the city as a whole. Not every department performed in the same way as what you're seeing here. But I would say largely, most departments were in this category. Obviously, it's, it's an average. So it's, I would say it's a high average. You have some that are pulling us up, some that might be right there in that average, and some that might be pulling us down.
No, the only reason why I ask is, you got, for an average, you've got to have a lot in the 90s, and only a very few in the well below that, kind of opposite, to get those kind of numbers. So being a numbers guy, and again, don't dispute what you got up there. I'm just saying it leaves cause to some of my conclusions that I've seen. So go ahead.
And, and I should add that our typical follow-up is to share, I, I believe at this point, we've shared our, the Workplace Report, which is the global report, the trends over time, also global look. The subsequent reports that you'll get will be the department breakdowns. And I think that, that covers it.
Okay. Vice Mayor? You want to wait till Lee in? All right, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Moving on, digging in further to job satisfaction aspects that, that are prevalent in the survey. Plan to work for the city a year from now, so we're 96% there. City is a good employer, 96% of our employees strongly agreed or agreed with that. 94% felt positive about working for the city, and 93% gained satisfaction from their job. Again, you'll see the color coding here, so you can see where we were either above, similar, or lower, if there were any that were lower than the benchmark. In this particular case, two were higher, and two were similar. Looking at aspects of working for the city in greater detail. And these are some interesting areas of the survey. Some of the work that we've been doing around our core values, we feel had some, some great impacts on these. So if you look at the first one, communicating standards of ethical behavior, we moved that nine points. So in 2020, we're at 88% favorability. In 2018, we're at 79%. Collaborating, or collaboration among work groups, again, movement of 5% there. Communication of work groups, communication among work group staff overall, positive movement there as well. City's reputation among staff, another move of 10%, which we think is very encouraging. There's that staff morale, overall morale. So that was one that, if you recall, you, you highlighted, and 63% didn't feel too good about morale. We moved it to 73. We're still not comfortable that we feel like we're there. But certainly, a 10-point movement in, in one cycle is significant. Applying discipline fairly inconsistently, again, you'll see movement there. And then opportunities for promotion, again, a 10-point movement there. So these are areas that the National Research Center looks at as aspects of the workplace and, and are reporting there.
Questions? Comments? Bill?
All right, I'll go now. Can you go back?
Sure.
Please. So on that, that's pulled from page eight in the Workplace Report, that, that data. So everybody knows where I'm reading. We still have, the whole report is very, very positive. I mean, there's no question about that. And I think what you're presenting tonight is the, the very positive result of that. The other side, which I think when we're talking about this, that we would continue to be concerned with is the connection between compensation and performance, dealing with low-performing employees, which remains less than 50%. Even though we've had some significant moving, movement in the applying discipline fairly inconsistently, obviously, I think every organization would like to see that number very high. That just is a good, that's a sign of good management, that we're doing those things. So are we gonna, are you, do you have a work plan that, that's going to come out of this to?
Indeed.
Because we could, we could drown in the positivity of it-
Sure.
And then completely miss the opportunity to continue to strengthen the organization. I think one of the things we all take pride in is the, the, the best workplace in the valley. And that's something that I think we've all taken very seriously. So I'm curious, if that comes up later, that's fine, I just-
Absolutely. I, I will talk about next steps in the process later. And, and what I would say at this point is that we are approaching this from a continuous improvement perspective. We don't think we've arrived. We think the city is a great place to work. However, we know we can be better. So we're looking at all avenues of the survey where we have opportunities. I'll talk a little bit about our focus areas. Dealing with low-performing employees is one of those that we've been dealing, working with over the, the last four iterations. So within this survey, there is certainly work to do. No question about that.
Sherry?
It, it's funny you mention that, because I have page eight open on mine, too, because that's kind of what drew my attention, was dealing. It looks like, just from the nature of some of the questions that are very similar, that there's a feeling that the, that some people aren't pulling their weight, and that the supervisors aren't helping those people pull the weight and the low performing. And then the people, it just seems like there's a little yin and yang there, that there's a group that does not feel like that everyone's pulling their weight, and that the low-performing employees aren't basically being recognized for that. And that just seems to be where I kind of took from several of those questions. The other area was the opportunities for promotion. And I'm guessing that has something to do with the fact that we're not a huge employer, and there isn't a lot of maybe movement at the top. So if you want to increase your career, you at some point have to leave. And I don't know if that's data we collect, because you can only go so far. If I'm in personnel and you're not going anywhere, you know, human resources, then there's only, there's a ceiling there for our employees. So I'm not sure how we deal with that.
And, and there's a couple of things with that question, and there is the yin and the yang there, because we also, within the survey, 94% of our employees say they want to be here a year from now. So if you're not having turnover, that curtails the opportunities to grow. Our approach has been that we, we are going to, and I hope you've seen a pattern of development. So as we're communicating this to our employees, our goal is to make them as competitive as possible. Hopefully, that opportunity happens to be here in the city, and they can compete, whether it be an internal recruitment or whether it be an external. They can compete with the best of the best. So that's our goal from a development perspective, and that's how we're communicating that. We obviously can't create every opportunity, but we certainly can prepare our employees to, to be able to take on those opportunities as they come. The great news is we're a growing city. So I think when you see that other 10-point swing, opportunities for promotion, we moved up 10 points there. So one of, one of our benchmark things that you don't see in the survey that we're constantly looking at is how many of our positions are filled internally. So our goal is to have 33% of our positions filled internally. We think that's a high number. This year, we were right around 26%. Last year, we hit that 30 percentile. But we are growing, and those opportunities are there, I would say, for people who want to grow, more so than some of the mature cities that aren't growing at the pace that we're growing at. So kind of a good news, bad news situation. But I think the key is how we communicate that to employees. And when we talk about development and readiness, it's not only about being ready for that next position, but it's being, it's mastering the position that you're in. So creating this growth environment is, is part of that communication that we're having with our employees.
And will that be some of the data you said that's coming later on, that we see when people like, might leave a department? Did they go to another department? Did they go somewhere else for a better job? Is that data you guys collect?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we collect data for our promotions internally. So if people are being successful in those recruitment processes, we're collecting that.
Well, thank you for your hard work on it.
Laura?
Wait, I have a question. Thank you. Does Goodyear have a formal written performance appraisal instrument?
We have, and one of our things, we're kind of jumping slightly ahead, but this is a great time to have the conversation. Part of our next phase of what we call our intentional design of Goodyear's culture is to look at performance management. So we have a performance management tool that is in the actual capital expenditure plan that we're working on right now. And performance management has changed considerably over time. Performance management has moved to the structured annual appraisal, where you try and capture a full year of performance in one sitting, one or two times a year, to ongoing conversations that are had in performance management that happen in real time. Let's not wait until it's time to do a performance appraisal before we have that performance discussion. So that's where we're moving. That's the system we're building. That's the system that is deemed most effective in the performance management world. We are in transition now, and you're starting, you're seeing some of that in the survey relative to some of the questions Vice Mayor Stip asked about connection to, not necessarily connection to compensation and performance, but even the performance conversations happening on a regular basis. So we're seeing it, we're hearing it-
Right.
And we are going to be addressing it in our next phase, which will start in January.
Okay, because that should be a methodology to have those coaching documented about your performance, and also steps you can take in the next year to prepare you for future opportunities or pursue projects or things that, you know, would help you with your career development. So I think that would, would probably help quite a bit. I mean, communication's always the challenge, ongoing communication. So, okay. And, and I know this isn't, this is sort of related, but do the directors also get some sort of performance instrument as well in terms of goal-setting and evaluating their results?
They would currently, the model that we've had in the past has been that traditional performance appraisal. We are moving to this new model, so directors will be part of that as well. This would be our system throughout, our performance management system would be consistent at all levels of the organization. And we think that's important, that, that tool and the system itself is universal. There may be some unique components from, you know, department to department that are specific to the department, but the, the, the structure would be the consistent throughout.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I would say G E O on Monday mornings, when I greet the people and spend a great deal of time with them, I'm stunned at the, what they're bringing with them, experience they had, the jobs they've had. It's mind-boggling. And I often talk about that when, I can't believe, you know, well, how lucky we are with your, you know, all the information and expertise you have. Along with the cities, we get a lot of people from the other cities coming in to compete. So I'm sure all of that has to be kind of put together. So to promote somebody, you know, and promote them at the level you need for the job, I think that's always, you know, tough to, to meet that criteria sometimes.
It's extremely competitive, and, and 26% of our employees are prevailing, so we feel good about that.
I can tell you the future employees we just hired. Wow, outstanding.
Okay. The, let's see here. I think I missed a slide there. Yes, I did. So key finding number two of the survey is confidence in city's executive leadership is at an all-time high. Again, National Research Center's words in their assessment and analysis of our survey scores, looking at the key aspects of executive leadership. These are the four areas that they pointed out. Again, we think some of these, many of these are related to our core values work, so communicating an inspiring vision, an inspiring vision. And I, I would add that our core values work, and back to the performance appraisal, this is foundational work for the performance appraisal that we want to have. So the work that we've been doing on core values is setting a foundation for expectations that are universal across the city. So we've had the words before, if you look at all of our core values, we've taken it to a new level in talking about what the expected behaviors of each of those core values are. And that's going to be a foundational component of the performance appraisal moving forward. So that inspiring vision, we feel is part of that work. Also, the strength of shared understanding amongst employees. Again, we've spent 18 months talking about a shared understanding, so everybody is on the same page. Spending three months on each of the core values, taking it from the top of the organization. Each director has worked that through their organization, so we think that's coming through in these scores as well. Clarity of strategic direction and speed of response. We think that speed of response is largely connected to work around the coronavirus. So we've had to shift, we've had to communicate in a different way. We've tried to be very timely in that communication and keep employees informed about what's going on. So that's emanated from executive leadership, and we think it's coming through in the ratings there. Last thing that they highlighted relative to executive ratings were these two areas that we talked about earlier, where 85% of our employees felt that executive leadership was there. Looking at our lowest rated scores, and this might answer a few other questions that were, were posed. Dealing with low-performing employees, we moved it in the right direction. We're still at 48%. And this might be one of the toughest areas of the survey. It has been one of our lowest scores on the survey. It's moved in the right direction. However, it's one of those things that often, it might be perception of whether we're dealing with an employee or not. So I think the key and our approach to this has been, let's make the standards clear. So again, back to that foundational piece of core values, let's make the standards clear, so everybody knows the standards. And you create the peer pressure. When I see you not upholding the standards, our employees are either beginning to call other employees out or, and/or beginning to praise other employees for modeling that behavior. So that's our approach, one of our approaches anyway, to addressing dealing with low-performing employees. It's working. Are we there yet? We're not there. So there's certainly still more work to do there. Recognizing high-performing employees, again, that's another area where we're far from where we want to be. And as you look at our survey action planning process, that will be a key part of that as well. Connecting compensation to performance, that's an area that we probably aren't going to get to right away. We purposely split the two. And I don't believe we're at a point now to talk about that connection again until we have that foundational piece in place. So that could be a strategic conversation that might come at a different time. But it is moving in the right direction. Opportunities for promotion, again, we talked about that, and applying discipline fairly inconsistently. To your point, Vice Mayor, that's a, a key that you would want to see high. We would hope that all of our employees feel like we treat people fairly when it comes to discipline. So again, there's work to be done there.
I have a question. So, so when a director talks to somebody, somebody that really would like to move up to a higher job, higher pay, do they take time and, and sit down and talk with them and say, "Well, this is where you're at, but this is what you need to do," and kind of scope them for success? I mean, and tell them what the timeframe is and what you need to be able to?
Absolutely. I think our directors do a good job of that. And one thing that, and I say directors, I would say leaders in the organization. I think one of the things that has been consistent in our survey is the relationship between employees and their supervisors. You know, it's an area that, in order to, to do it well and be the best, you have to have some structure around it. So there are some things that I think are, are in our future with regard to mentoring and things along those lines. Are we there yet? No, we're not there. So there's work there that we need to do to provide a different level of career counseling. I think at a base level, I think we do a very good job of that one-on-one connection between employees and their supervisor or employees and their department leader. Generally, I think we're doing a good job there.
Do we do any testimonies?
We certainly could. Absolutely.
So you know those that have been very successful. I mean, we do that in sales. That's how we, we acquire so much by using those testimonies from people. And that, so there are probably people or employees that have done a really good job, and they're, they're keyed for they're going to get a, but once they do, it would be very nice. But once they do, it would be very nice to let them share how they felt, you know, the path was for them to meet that.
Great, great suggestion, and I think it's something that we can certainly look at and promote more effectively.
Joe?
You know, for me too, providing, again, opportunity to develop a career path. I know smaller as we grow, that's probably going to be challenging. Dealing with low performance employees, I agree, you got to put some effort into that to try to get that up. 48 is really unacceptable. But also, from my perspective, a good manager providing recognition for doing good work. The bad managers always complain when you do something wrong, but never tell you when you do something good, okay? To me, 73% should be a lot higher than 75%. I mean, the managers should be recognizing positive work, good work of their employees instead of maybe focusing always on the negative, because that also impacts morale as well. So from my perspective, recognition for doing good work, 73 is, in my opinion, way too low. Because a manager's job should be to try to create that environment or work environment that conduces people to want to do a better job, because they know they're appreciated and cared for and they're recognized when they do that. So that's what I kind of see with that 73%, being way, way too low. And communicating information in a timely manner, that can get very frustrated from staff when they don't get that timely. All right, in fact, if it's not timely, they may end up doing something that causes a problem because they didn't get the information timely. So I know these may be benchmarks overall, but I think we're better than that, and I would like to see us reach much higher goals in, in some of these benchmarks.
Joe?
Let me, just a couple of observations, I guess. One is the, the dealing with low performing employees. I want to say historically, as a city, we have always said, or we've always seemed to, if Sherry's a problem in Public Works, and I'm not a problem in Finance, we move me over to Public Works and Sherry over to Finance. That has, that has been, that's been a systemic scenario within the city's culture, because we feel presumably that she would be more successful in a different department rather than being successful in the job she was hired to do. So if those kinds of practices are continuing to happen, that significantly affects this type of, of rating. And you had mentioned something about empowering employees to kind of call one another out. I worry that that turns into, hey, believe me, I'm just going to, I mean, that was the, that was the method of operation in the fire service, you know, I mean, that, you took care of yourself on your crew, and if somebody wasn't cutting the, you know, pulling their weight, you let them know it. But I think there's a, there potentially a negative attribute to that, which I'm sure you, you're aware that, you know, we've got to be, we've got to be careful about, about self-regulation in the workplace as opposed to people who, which would then take the supervisor out of it. People need, if someone can't do the job, they've just got to be told, and I think Julie said it during her value, during her interview, we manage them up or we manage them out. And that, that's a, there's a real statement to that. And I think that gets to a lot of the, these kinds of issues. How many of these people are we actually managing out? We can do a lot, but certainly, you know, go through that. So I'm not expecting an answer, but I, I just wanted to kind of be on record that.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that certainly, I think deserves a response. I, I would say that we have certainly made a shift in dealing with performance issues. I think you'll see that in a number of areas. So I don't think we're moving problems within the organization. I, I would, I cannot think of one circumstance where I felt like we moved a problem from one place to another. I would say that, I would totally agree with you also on kind of self policing or putting our employees in a place to police. To me, it was more about establishing a standard where everybody knows the standard, and I think people have fun with it when they have an opportunity. So it's more of an opportunity to praise a teammate for modeling the behavior as it is to call him out. But, but, but I, I think the process itself has been one where we've tried to inject fun into it. So we can have fun both ways, but where there's a problem, I think we're getting, and I think we're very good at managing problems. Are we perfect? No, by any means. However, I cannot cite in my mind a situation where we've moved a problem from one place to another.
I think the mugging concept is, I think that's a very, very fun way of recognizing one another. And I could envision people proudly displaying their mug, you know, on their, on their desk or whatever. So I, I think we're definitely making, and if you look at the chart, we're certainly making some headway in some of these problematic areas. And if you go back to probably when you started, you know, in the, that early 2012, 2013, 2014, we had a, we had, we had problems. So the fact that we're still moving forward, we're still, you know, this is all, this is all good for us. So, thanks.
I think handling people is very difficult sometimes because sometimes they're not communicative. And they'll tell you something, but it's not internalized, it's not what they feel. It's how they get through wherever they are. So I say good kudos to you, because this is not an easy job. You know, we talk about, you know, politicians being such vague sometimes. Well, we have the same thing, employees. And, and so, you know, it's detrimental to the group. But to try to pick that out and work with them, and, and no matter what they think they are, make them a success, you know, and show them how it's done, no matter how they act or internalize it, it's a real accomplishment. But it, it takes a lot of time, it takes really good, you know, supervisors and managers and directors. I mean, it's not all on your department, I mean, you can only do so much. But I, I always feel the, the employee that encourages people to advance themselves and learn, that's a trainer. That's born trainer, they may be in a low position, maybe in a medium position. But that to teach people what the accomplishment is, not a paycheck, not a dollar to them, just the praise, genuine praise to somebody, appreciating exactly what they've done is, is very meaningful. Don't get me wrong, I know everybody wants a good paycheck, but I'm just saying for these incidents, it needs.
And, and I, I think you hit the nail on the head there, and I, I think one of the things that we focused on over the last few years is leadership development. So our leaders have gone through, Franklin Covey's Four Essentials of Leadership has been kind of the foundational piece, but through that, we're focusing on these components. We're trying to, we're looking at communication, how do you communicate? How do you praise? How do you deal with your low performing employees? So I, I think our leaders have even stepped it up a notch in, in, in the way they lead. And I, and I wouldn't even say they've even stepped it up a notch. I think they're invested in leadership, and we see that in how they're engaged in the coursework that we're bringing to them. And that coursework is directly related to trying to address these issues.
Well, the city's a winning team. Of all the West Valley, we're the ones that are moving out, moving forward, moving high. So what a, what a good idea from work for a company that's successful. So I, I think just that attitude in the departments about, look where we are, look where we're going, you know, it's exciting.
Absolutely. So you've seen our focus areas here, we've worked on those. I would agree that 75%, that was a target that we established back in 2016. You can see where we were at there, you can see that we still have work to do. And as I said, we've got leaders at all levels of the organization working on trying to address these issues. Looking at areas of most significant improvement, you can see six of the areas here. And I, I think what's most significant, I won't talk about each of these, but what I will say is that the movement in one cycle of 10 or 11 points is significant. I think if you look back at the prior page where it's taken us four cycles to move some of those scores, I think this year is a good year to look at some of these, particularly when you look at overall staff morale. And, and I, I really want to point out, because this is an area where, you know, the executive team has really focused in on and said, that overall morale is, that's not us. We're, we're better than that, so let's make sure that we reflect that in how we, we move forward. So again, work to be done there. These are areas of the survey that decreased. So as I mentioned earlier, mathematically, we only had three areas that decreased from last year. This first one here, again, I think we've had two questions in this area. Councilmember Keno and Vice Mayor Stip looked at this first question, and this is directly related to our performance management process. So we have a, a goal on how we're going to address this issue here. The other two were, were areas that didn't have a significant move, significant movement. But that one really stood out to us as an area of opportunity. We also had a, a couple of areas of the survey that were directly related to council goals. So council goal number 1.1 was to improve, improve employee satisfaction by 10%. And that was measured by looking at the question, overall, I'm satisfied with my job. When this was set back in 2016, we were at, right at 90%. So moving at 10% would have taken us to 100. So what we did is let's, our, our goal was kind of shifted to let's move the people who strongly agree from 52 to 62%. We fell short of that goal, we moved it from 52 to 60%. So we fell just short of that, so again, more work to do. We think it was good progress, but not where we wanted to end on that particular.
What's the conversation that goes on with that? I mean, how do you approach that?
Again, I, I think there, there are multiple aspects of employee satisfaction. So we're looking at a lot of different things. Back in 2014, when we decided on the four focus areas that were in that prior slide, this one here, we felt that focusing on these four areas would help drive satisfaction and also drive morale. So that's how we arrived at this. Leadership had a strategy session, we looked at the survey in its entirety, and we, we identified these areas as the areas of focus.
Well, I agree, I think that thanking someone lacks in our society at the time that they need to be thanked. And I don't see any excuse for some of those that say they didn't get talked to or they didn't, or the director's too busy or couldn't, didn't think that was important enough. But I think praising for a good job, for a job well done, should be immediate. I don't think it should be waiting till they have their, their yearly or six month talk. It should be, it should be just innate to the director that they can point that out.
Absolutely. The next area of the survey that was connected to a council goal was council goal 1.2, and that was to achieve a 75% positive employee rating on the question, on the organization's support of continual learning and development. And then this one was determined by a favorability rating. So we actually hit this goal in our seven, or 2018 survey, and we actually moved it a little bit further along, so we ended up at 78% in support of continual learning and development. The last and third key finding that National Research Center came up with was the support services maintain or exceed improvements made in past years. So we've made progress in past years, they highlighted a couple of areas here. They looked at maintenance and repair services and facilities, management services overall, where employees rated either excellent or good. So that was the last of the conclusions, and just to highlight the conclusions, these were the, the three, job satisfaction remains strong and morale continues to soar, confidence in city's executive leadership is at an all time high, and support services maintain or exceed improvements made in past years. So our next steps, and, and I'll walk through this, I'm looking at something a little different that we've added here. But on November the 2nd, we've shared the results at the department level. So all directors have their results, and they're beginning to look at those. They'll be going back out to their various organizations and leaders within their organizations and digging into the survey so we fully understand what the employees are telling us. We'll be communicating to the organization. That will actually happen next week, where we'll get the information out to the entire organization so that they, they can see it. We'll start our action planning process on November, November the 16th, and that'll continue through the end of December, getting information back from our employees. And we'll begin looking at our, our next phase two, which will incorporate some of the things that we need to do within the survey action plan. So that's what's upcoming as we look forward.
Any questions?
Just, just a comment, I, I assume when, again, I hate to use the word assume, because you know what that does. Department levels, when it gets back down to the department levels, I would, I would suspect that they will have a action plan on those areas that need improvement that going to be working with management, city management, to try to work on those areas that the survey says needs help.
That is correct. So at our retreat last, last Friday, everything blends together. We spent time talking about the survey, and everybody's got an action plan template. So ultimately, every department will have an action plan. Those action plans will include things that are necessary at the department level. Each department's going to have something likely unique to that department. So their department plans will be built around the needs of their individual departments.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Do you think that COVID had any impact on the ratings? I mean, in terms of workplace conflict and things and relationships with supervisors, it's been an incredible year. I mean, just curious.
I, I think so, I, it's, it's hard for me to believe that there hasn't been, and we took our department back, the directors kind of just back to relive all the things, some of, I didn't include everything, we couldn't, but include a lot of the significant things that have happened since March. And there's, there's been a lot of things happening and impact. I, I unfortunately did not get back a question that I posed to National Research Center, but when I get that information, we certainly be happy to share it. And we were looking to see if there's any statistical or anecdotal information where others of their 50 cities have decided either not to do the survey or they've seen some kind of statistical change, or even anecdotal change in their ratings because of COVID. Just be interesting to know. For us, I think there has been, and I think our, our, we came up with our own set of conclusions. One of, one of those was, we think our leaders have done a great job through COVID from the outset, when we started looking at employees and looking at services and categorizing services from essential to non-essential. There's a dynamic in the organization already. People who may be non-essential may not feel like they're, may feel like their value may have been diminished in some way. Obviously, that wasn't the case, so our leaders had to talk about the importance of it. They also had to talk about it from the essential services perspective of employees and the things that they do and how COVID has impacted their work. So even that one dynamic created an opportunity that could have been a negative opportunity. Our, our salary increases, again, weren't what they typically wore in some pockets of the organization. So there were a host of things. So there were a host of things that I think were managed well, even from council in how council communicated that you'd like to come back and look at it when more information was available. So there were, there were things that have happened through the course of time that I think took leadership that otherwise we may not have had to engage in to be as successful as we were.
I think your communication game's been very strong, and it's definitely reflected in the ratings. One area under morale that I didn't see categorized or even really mentioned has to do with harassment, discrimination, diversity. I don't, you know, I don't know. There's, those are, definitely have legal implications. And I'm also curious if there are employee affinity groups or employee resource, resource groups within Goodyear that, you know, form an employee committee that can generally help with overall job satisfaction.
Sure. And there is one question in the survey related to harassment, and we scored favorably on that question, environment free of harassment. And I can't think of the exact wording, but there is one that relates to that. And we don't have affinity groups today. We've had a couple of startups that have fizzled out. We don't have that structure in place today. But I think we have other outlets that we're trying to build to push employee well-being and inclusiveness in the organization. Again, I think there certainly could be opportunities here to help, you know? I think our overall goal in the work that we're doing in the survey and the work that we're doing to support the survey is to engage our employees in the work that they do. And with engagement comes satisfaction, is our belief.
Yes, Molly?
Well, I thought during the COVID, our city operated in an extraordinary way. They, I don't think they really missed a beat. And in listening to GPEC week after week after week after week, and they were talking to big companies who had to rethink how they were going to operate and how they were able to bring their employees closer to them, even though they were not in-house, they were all everywhere, at home, maybe on the road. I don't know where they were. And it was interesting because I did not, I do not recall one company saying that they really had an issue with the COVID. They were able to quickly determine how to operate, how to keep going. We kept our city open, which was amazing to me, and I think everybody really stepped up to the plate. And I would hope that the employees would know how valuable they were to us during that time because they were still pulling their weight at home, even though they weren't here in-house. And the ones that were actually out were still doing the same job, doing the same thing with the same, same everything except this COVID hovering over them. And I think it's just extraordinary that we've done as well as we've done, and I'm really very proud of our city. And I, I want to thank all of our employees for everything that they do. I hope they have an opportunity, though, to talk to the supervisors before the year end if they're unhappy about something or if they don't feel they're being treated fairly. Sometimes perception is everything, and I can't help but think that if they do not feel that some of the lower-performing employees are being disciplined enough or quick enough, they are, but they just, it's just not out there. They don't see it, and they shouldn't see it necessarily. And so I think people need to just know that we're doing everything we can to keep everything together and to be fair to everyone and to provide a place for everyone to feel safe and enjoy coming to work. I can't imagine working in any other city but Goodyear. I hear nothing but wonderful things about it, and everybody wants to come here to work. I don't know that we pay more than anyone. I just think it's the family attitude, and it's, it's how well everyone gets along, and I think that's a big plus to our city. We're very unique in that way.
Brandon?
Yeah, I also think, just cognitively, I think COVID had to do, had something good or bad. I mean, working from home is probably maybe a nice benefit for people who always had to be in the office. So being flexible, I think good leadership, being able to manage that well was good also. Is there a reason, I mean, the answer could be COVID. Now, this survey was two months later than the previous surveys?
September.
September, right?
Yeah, September, end of August, September is when we collected the data.
And all the previous ones were July, June, July, right?
Right, yeah. July, August, generally in August, the month of August.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was looking through. They're all in like June, July time period, at least the last, last three or four. So is that, is that because of COVID or is that just timing-wise, how it worked out?
I, I think we, we did contemplate whether we should do the survey or not. And at the end of the day, I think the decision was whether COVID skews our numbers or not, the numbers are what they are, so let's do the survey and let's deal with it, I think was the ultimate decision from executive leadership. So it was slightly off, but still within that, that time.
Yeah, okay. But it was a year, about a year and two months essentially before the last, since the last one occurred.
Every two years. So we've been on a two-year cycle, yeah.
Okay.
And so we're consistent.
Okay. So for some departments, if there was a large turnover, they might, you might not have captured their data in a survey necessarily.
Yeah, we may not have captured those employees if they weren't here at the time.
Yeah, which makes sense.
Certainly.
Okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, having, once you get down to the drill, down to the departments and the actual plans to the actual departments, so then they can work on their particular pros and cons or whatever, whatever their particular things are, is good. I assume you, I mean, you, those they tell who did what, what this, who, which employee gave which feedback, but I'm sure the director can see from as a whole what their department did, so that they can take.
Yeah, that's our goal. Yeah, the council member Campbell's point, between now and the end of the year, that's our goal, is to sit down, let's understand what, what do you, what does this mean? We don't deal with low-performing employees. Tell us, what can we do better?
What does that look like?
Let's understand, right, to fully understand where opportunities at and what we can do organizationally at each level to address it.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're, our employees are vital, and I mean, they're vital to our success. I'm really proud of all the work that they're doing. So being able to make sure that they're taken care of and make sure that they're listened to and communicated to is important. So having a good work environment is what attracts good, continues to attract good employees. So, so yeah, no, I appreciate these surveys. So, thank you.
Any other?
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one more meeting, so. I'm going to wait you. Are you in the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
Oh, well, all right, just want to make sure. All right, I'm going, no further business discussed. Any other business to discuss? All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and I'm going to.